At four thirty on Wednesday, December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, we call a special school board meeting to order. We have all board members present this evening. The approval of the agenda, we're going to add on five point oh, approval of the MSBA contract. Is there anything else that needs to be added to the agenda? None, I'll take a motion approved with the approval of the MSBA contract added to five point oh. So, motion by Scott. Second, Eric, can you through the discussion on the agenda?
Hearing none, all in favor.
I have posts, carries.
So move on to four point oh, which is the Minnesota School Board Association presentation. You have Mr. Lee here tonight to kick that off for us. You go ahead.
Good, I will walk you through the process of what it is that you're hiring MSBA to do, and then answer any questions that you might have, and see where we can go from there. Essentially, back in your packet a little ways, you'll see a series of pages that lead up to page four of your packet. As a way of introduction, I've been in this area for a long time. I put West Central Schools together back in the days, and I was a service club director for fifteen years, worked with Matt's dad for many years, he followed me actually. I ran MRDA for quite a few years, and I ran a national agency out of DC for the service clubs for six years. So, in the last six years, I've been, six, seven years, I've been doing superintendent searches for MSBA, so I've probably done thirty-five or so searches, something like that. So I currently, like Rick, I can't retire, so.
Rick, I'm trying.
See all the search codes.
I'm retired four times, I'm very tired. So I want to go through the process, you're looking at the limited contract, which is essentially us getting you set up and get started, and then we do all of the back office work for you, which includes things like, and I'll go through all of this with you a little bit later too, we'll be putting together the vacancy brochure, that's the advertising document, if you will, we'll give it to you for you to put on your website, that's a good place because they're going to be, any candidate's going to be looking at your website for information. A couple of good places to check, I talked to Clayton Willard in Pipestone, his secretary was our contact person, and she used a great system, had a beautiful banner with the superintendent search and a bunch of pull down things that I'm sure they would give you, and that way when anybody contacts you, you can get it, so that brochure tonight, we can get finished what we want, we send it out to a multitude of sites. MSBA is the prime spot when any superintendent will look for a job, opening the Superintendent Association, MESA, Principals Association, EdPost, which is an education board, there are a couple other sites, plus a software system that we use, it's called Revelus, and you'll get quite familiar with that before we get done with the process. Revelus is where any candidate would put their application in, and when the deadline closes, we will turn over that files to you, you'll see every piece of paper that they produced, so you can look at that twenty-four seven during the whole process that you're looking at things. So it gets advertised, Revelus is in twenty-two, twenty-three states, I think, and so it also gets advertised nationally, so, and you can always put it in other places, because of our proximity to the border, sometimes you know, you look at doing advertisements in magazines, they think it's pretty spending, but it's nothing to drop four, five, or six hundred dollars for an advertisement, so some districts have chosen not to do that, I think Pipestone did not do the advertising on theirs. Then we'll talk about the hiring criteria that you already, you all filled out and set back, we'll talk a little bit about the salary verbiage that will be in there, and why that might be important, and if you have questions about salary, we can talk about that. Then we'll deal with how you want your current superintendent's role to be, under normal circumstances, this is under normal circumstance, it would be different than what I think yours is going to be, we can talk about that, we can talk about the screening area. One of the things that we found that in the application itself, we could embed a couple of questions there in depth, candidates typically write half-page, full-page, response to the questions, and it might be a question of last year, the district who really wanted to do a referendum, and they needed somebody with these traits, so we crafted a question for them about what is your experience in referendums, explain what that is, if you haven't, how would you approach a referendum, that kind of thing. Sometimes districts are doing curriculum reviews, and they want to write about curriculum. Sometimes districts have facility issues, and they want to talk about their experience with facilities, or they might have negotiations, it's a big deal for them, whatever the issues might be. So the candidates would answer these questions as part of their application, so when you get to read them, if these two priorities are really important to you, it will help you as you sort through the candidates, decide whether or not you want to interview them. So we'll do that, and then I'll try to answer any questions for you that you might have. In the meantime, when the deadline hits, then we will send you, one of the people, there's four, five of us that are working on this together, Shelby, as her name, will send you a link and ask you to create your password, using a password to access the data that would come the morning after the deadline, so whatever deadline you set, that next morning you'll get that email, you create that simple, take a couple minutes, the next morning at EDM, you get unlimited access until the end of the search. So Shelby would then send you a link the next morning by eight o'clock, and you could then, you can get those. So that's what we're going to do today, I think we've hit that amount, or maybe, so I'm good. Okay, let me talk a little bit about the timeline, the next page, this will also be posted, because any candidate that's looking for a job is going to say, okay, when do I need, if I'm going to be a candidate, when do I need resources for interviewing, or when's the deadline, get all my stuff in, or, you know, when do they expect me to start, whatever. So on the top part of that is what we will be doing tonight, I think the December eighth, we've got, most of the brochures already built, we've seen it, I think it's part of this package, we just will fill out a few of the final things that you decide tonight. I won't get home tonight until about eleven, but I'll send it out before seven in the morning, and Amy will rebuild it, we should have posted it late Friday morning. So January eighth, that date will actually be when your closing is, and it doesn't have to be January eighth, it could be whatever date you've set that to be, so we'll choose what that date is in a little bit. So four weeks is a short timeframe, very short, six is probably normal, we've got a Christmas holiday here, that's good, that's typically what candidates are going to want to talk about, you know, am I going to look for another job, or what the deal, so your timing is good right now. So we'll decide what that application deadline is, the day after your deadline, our team will get into the applications, and we'll go through them and review and make sure that everything is there, sometimes their applications will come in, it would be like, Lee applying for Harvard, but it doesn't work, I don't want it, but you know, it wouldn't work, they'd never look at me, we do get applications like that, or somebody will never have, they might falsify their records on, you know, licensure, whatever, we do a license check and some of those things, so we'll go through that, by that, that's the day that you'll get the email, the day after the deadline from Shelby, then the next day, that morning is the date that you would get access to the applications. So then, depending upon what you want, we will also review the applications, and we will send you a list of candidates that match your qualifications, they may not be the recommendations that we make, but they'll be people that match, and that's what's part of this particular package, and we'll determine that date here today. Then in addition, I would recommend that you set tonight the, what date you're going to choose who to interview, when you're going to do the interviews first, and I would establish a second round. Can you hire somebody at the first round?
Yes.
But you might want to set two up just in case, you can always cancel it, just like any other board meeting. And then sometimes boards put in dates when the committee will meet to negotiate a contract, depends upon how you do it. If you negotiate a contract as a team, as a negotiations team, then you'll for sure want to set that date, because it would be a normal committee meeting date. If you're going to establish a salary guideline, you know, say we're going to have the board chair negotiated, or they had negotiated, whatever process you use, and the salary range will be from here to here, you go ahead and negotiate a contract, whoever that is, that's the other way that boards typically do it. So then, put a date down when you'd agree to accept the contract, when you decide to make the decision. Here's why, if I'm a candidate applying, I want to know, okay, here's the deadline, here are the dates, I need to make sure I don't book anything, in case I get selected to be interviewed, and finally, this is when they're going to try to negotiate, so if I need to be available. We've had people that have been cruises, you know, and, oh gosh, I screwed up, I should be. Yeah, you should, have a nice cruise, you know, kind of deal, or whatever, so that's why you want to do that, so that's what we're going to step into next. Right behind it, I tucked in a list of the dates that we have restrictions on for meeting by law, there's only a couple that would fall in there for us, one of the January fifteenth and probably February nineteenth, my guess is you'll do that by that time anyway, but the fifteenth is one, and it tells you what you can't do there, so. So at that point, Corey, if you want to begin, we can talk about how long you want to post and what those dates might be.
I think you had said, you know, four weeks is probably short, we should probably look at maybe a six-week timeline for the applications to be open, so that would put us into probably January twenty-something, or six weeks.
The fifteenth through the nineteenth would be, let's see, that would be five weeks, right?
That'd be six, that'd be six weeks.
Six weeks to the nineteenth.
And one thing, you know, look at the fifteenth on Monday, for January fifteenth for the deadline, that'd be at midnight, then the sixteenth you would get, then you'd sign up, and the seventeenth you would have access to paperwork.
Thoughts on that? So January fifteenth, the deadline would be, January sixteenth would be MSBA's review, and then the seventeenth, we'd have access to Revelus to view the candidates.
Now the next thing, and we could adopt this whole, the next one would be, what do you, how long do you want to review them, you want to, you know, when's your next regular meeting after the fifteenth, you would have, like Monday, you'd have a one, two, three, four, five, six, that's a twenty-second.
Be the twenty-second of the next meeting.
You want to do that, or just, before we do that, when you start about reviewing these, do they do that on their own?
Yeah.
Do they do that on their own, and then they come together on the twenty-second?
Yeah, you can't have the back office discussions, that's what we sent them, like carbon copy, they're by law, you can't carry out business outside of the field, but you'll review them all, and then when you come together, that's when you'd have your discussion about who do we want to review in the area.
Now is that a closed meeting, or is that a public?
Everything you do regarding this process has to be open.
Okay.
Don't do anything in a closed meeting.
So if they, if they do things on the seventeenth, if that's when the board members would be able to start reviewing, then you're looking at a date on the twenty-second, is that what you were?
I was thinking, that would give you a good six, almost six weeks, that should be enough time.
Okay.
Twenty-second, and then the morning of the twenty-second, we'll send you the list of the names, and I'll email them directly to you, who we feel matched, you know, the qualifications, we don't do any background vetting with this limited search, but I'll talk to Rick or whatever, they'll guide you through that.
And then, so that would be January twenty-second, then the board would meet to determine finalists and any questions and procedures?
Right. Yeah, and you could do that in advance, the questions and things you could do in advance. One of the difficulties with questions always is, we do everything out in the open, and so as you talk about questions, it's kind of hard, you know, because anybody, if you record and you post recordings that, you know, if I'm a savvy candidate, I'm going to read through them all, all of everything you're doing, and if I'm interested, I'm probably going to do it anyway. So one thing you might, you know, you might want to think about how you develop those questions, but you could have it done that night, or do it another day, if that's a regular board meeting, I would recommend you do it, you know, before that.
Could I ask the board to develop their questions and send them in, we just collate them, and then when we get together, just refine down to, if you have thirty, what are going to be the talking questions or something?
What I typically have done on a full meal deal is to recommend about seventeen questions for an hour. And what we do is an open discussion, is that I give them a list of the questions, then we talk about questions by number. If anybody really wants a copy of that, they can request, we can give it to them, and it's, then we've had to do that a few times, whether it's an interim candidate, but typically you say, you know, I like number two, how many people give support number two, yeah, okay, how many would support number four, okay, you had a chance to see them, and, you know, it's not bypassing the process, but it's also not openly advertising, so anybody who watches the video, but it's, anything that hits the table, it's public information, you have to share it.
So the questions you're talking about are for the interviews, eventually when we actually sit down with superintendents you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so the seventeenth, we review the information, we have basically the three days of the week, and then the weekend, and then say we do whatever we're going to do at our next board meeting without adding more meetings?
Right, you would select who you want to interview on the twenty-second.
But you can't send us the list that you would recommend until that actual date?
We would, because we'll be reviewing them too as well.
So there's no way you can get it to us before then?
Sure. Yeah, you're going to get them on the sixteenth, aren't they?
I'll get them on the seventeenth, or seventeen.
Because I guess when you were starting to talk.
What you're just talking about is when are we going to send our list out to all of y'all to take a look at?
So then we can have something to review, so that if we did sit down on the twenty-second, we kind of have a heads up of what they're recommending, we can kind of have in our heads of what worth it, so that we're doing it from square one.
So maybe that's a good question, so what they're going to do is, they're going to be able to review all the applicants, but the MSB is going to send out a roster of here are, here's your recommendations that align with our criteria? Lee? Yes, that's what we're talking about, and then how that's considered with everything else.
How about the sixtieth here? Sure, that's even before we get them?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, no. Nineteenth, nineteen, I'm sorry, what did I say, sixteen, nineteen, I'm sorry.
So then, you're thinking we're going to need an extra meeting anyway, just to come up with questions for the interviews?
Yeah, we could do it by committee, or you could tell your superintendents.
Do we have questions from last time, Lisa? So I'm watching.
Yeah, just go off of that.
Just grab those from last time and?
Is that the only one I had or rebounded? No, I'm just saying if you go back through it.
No, I'm saying, yeah.
Questions we'd like to ask them, we'll get them to them, but yeah, there's no such thing.
Send that, should I just email that to you?
Just email it to all of us, yeah.
Now, I got to know if you're sort of the nineteenth, I will set stuff up.
Do everything on the twenty-second then?
Yeah.
Week later, you recommend, so, twenty-ninth area for?
Think about how it fits into your schedules too, because you all are busy too, but, you know, maybe there's, you want to do a vote in one week, you know, it's a few days apart, maybe you want to do it towards the end of the week, and then the following, early part of the week, there's only a couple of days for people. Typically, what I see candidates do is if you go to the first interview and it's not clear, they should have done their background homework about communities, you know, and driven around and checked things out if they're not already familiar, and if not, sometimes they want to bring their family back or whatever, but most of them are coming in advance, touring around, and you'll even hear, there was a stranger in town asking about the school, I heard, so that's probably a candidate.
So if, now this could be crunch time, but this would be a chance to stay like hot on this, if the twenty-second is the date that you determine finalists, make sure your interview questions and everything is in place, is there a possibility that we could set interviews up for that Saturday, twenty-seventh?
Easily.
To do, if you're going to do four interviews, try to do them in that date?
We've actually done it like two days later.
But I'm just.
As a candidate, they'll see this, and they'll know where the interviews are, so they're going to hold their dates.
Because then you could have interviews on that twenty-seventh with follow-up interviews if you decided you wanted to bring, say, two people back in on the thirty-first, looking at the Wednesdays, I mean, it's a lot for you guys, but I think what's going to happen is more and more districts are going to start to advertise for possible vacancy, and then, so if we looked at the twenty-seventh for a full day of interviews, I think nothing better than this.
All the time.
Good job. Twenty-seventh, I'd bring them back on the thirty-first.
And then be willing to have a second interview if that was necessary on the thirty-first, if you got your candidate on the twenty-seventh, you could move forward, you could give the team, how are you going to do it for negotiation?
I would assume you'd cut it down to two on the thirty-first, so you could do it in the evenings reasonably.
So we Wednesday evening?
Yeah. You had two or three candidates is typical, if you go to a second round, and you might get into the first round, and one person just, he or she just chumps out at you, clearly the candidate, you can make a decision after one round, that's what you want to do. So we would say first round of interviews, so anybody that interviewed on the twenty-seventh, would they be a finalist then, Lee, say they were finalists?
Yeah, you'd call them the first round, when you, like, when you choose the, like, January twenty-second, you semi-finalist technically.
Okay.
And then if you go to a second round, then they would be a finalist.
Okay.
But, you know, it's made up to model.
But I mean. But the twenty-second, we are picking who we're going to interview on the twenty-seventh?
Yes. But twenty-seven, yes, I want to make sure it is great, so if they picked, say, four to five people they're going to interview on the twenty-seventh, on the twenty-seventh, are those people they'd be interviewing, is that public information?
Yes.
Okay, on the twenty-second, soon as the board makes a decision, it's public information?
Yes.
So those people are all finalists then?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, it's interesting, when I do the full deal, the board will talk about candidates, and when you talk about the candidates until the finalists, you can't reveal their names. So you might want to put letters, you know, and we typically will do that, so you'll talk about candidate A, candidate B, candidate C, and try not to give away their, who they are by their job title or whatever. Once you've decided we want to interview candidate C, D, A, and F, or whatever it is, and you pass that motion, after you've done that before the meeting, yes, you must reveal their names, when you reveal their names, it's public information. When, I've been in that situation, I typically will turn around and say, would you go and give me fifteen minutes so I can call them before social media outruns me, because some candidates will go, I already heard about it, you know, somebody in the audience posted it, and they're following it, or I'm working at East Grand Forks, and they have live television, so our whole discussion was being broadcast around town, and one of the candidates already knew about it within five minutes of the time I tried to call.
What's the date of the January board meeting?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. So what we would be doing would be, at the regular board meeting on the twenty-second, identifying whoever we're going to interview, setting the interviews up for Saturday, the twenty-seventh, it'd be an all-day thing.
We like, set twenty-seventh as working, because it hasn't been a work for me, we keep using the twenty-seventh, so.
Well, I was just using it because it was a Saturday, but, well, what works for you? The reason I got this calendar in front is, you know, so you know what's going on.
Some of that weekend does not work.
So if that date doesn't work, is, you can go a couple of nights, I try to get four in one night, it's pretty tough, if you're going to interview more than four, I go three and three, or whatever the tuckers you are, you know. I'm trying to give the applicants some notice, if they get selected, say on the twenty-second, they find out on the twenty-third, they were the finalists.
But if you post this, they'll know in advance anyway, that's not an issue, because this is information that any candidate's going to see, so if I know that you're making a decision on the twenty-second, you call me on the twenty-second, I already know that the evening of the twenty-fourth, they're doing interviews, so I already know in advance that if I get selected, that's what it's going to be, so whatever gives you capital.
How early in the, how early in the evening can you start? Like a three, three, four o'clock?
I don't know, I mean, I don't have, I don't know where to begin. I understand the importance of going to your kids' baseball, basketball, all them sports, but at one point here, you guys got to give up, because I can't make Saturday because I have a missing child, so.
So like the twenty-fourth, so you said you could turn around in two days, kind of, so if they did like the twenty-fourth in that evening, is maybe you could?
I mean, interview.
Put in there, you know, and then if we needed to go to the twenty-fifth?
But you're going to have to have that set, so the candidates know.
Oh, right, yep. So if that works for us, then that's what we would tell them.
Would it be possible, Larry, to take that date on the twenty-fourth? I mean, we're giving, you guys noticed six weeks in advance, would it be somewhere we could ask everybody to come that day, and we do four, or five, or three?
Three days.
Whatever you choose, on Wednesday, and then what would it be then? Then it could be, the second date we chose would be an if needed date, right? If they do like four interviews and they get their person, I suppose, list both dates, you can always cancel the board vote, okay, but you have to have a three-day posted meeting, three days before you can, post it three days before you can have it, so, name both days, and if you got to cancel it, well, just, no need, come meet tomorrow, whatever.
Are interviews open?
Yes, everything, everything.
So twenty-fourth, and then if there's second rounds, the twenty-ninth? On Monday? That'd be in the evenings, we should have two.
One and two. It'd either be that night or the thirty-first.
I would rather go the thirty-first.
Or thirty-first. So all day twenty-fourth, with the potential of the thirty-fourth being the second?
Second round, we need to. On the thirty-first, we'd be able to go, five.
Well, that would be the second round, hopefully twenty-two.
Right, if you go at five o'clock.
Oh, sure.
Five o'clock.
So what time are we starting on the twenty-fourth?
So that's about where the candidates are coming from, so probably ten o'clock at the earliest.
What are you talking about?
They would just know already, so.
Yeah, we'll make it different, so as long as you post it, they'll know.
Well, if you went ten, if you figure an hour, three, twenty, ten to eleven, eleven and twelve, you can take a line.
I would say we'd go an hour and fifteen minutes on each one. With maybe.
Figure an hour for, an hour for the interview, give yourself fifteen minutes in between. So if somebody runs over a little bit, you know, you've got a little flexibility. So you could easily, you could do, you know, you can give four.
Ten, five, fifteen, forty, thirty. One forty-five.
Ten left, you gotta eat in there, so go to the bathroom.
Yeah, two thirty to, say, it's a little one. And then two fifteen. So we could have ten, to eleven, eleven fifteen to twelve fifteen. Twelve fifteen to, one would be dinner or lunch. One to two fifteen would be the third interview and two thirty to four would be the fourth interview if you interview four people. And then that would give us time after that to, you could have your dialogue if you wanted. Do you wanna bring somebody back or have a second interview?
Can I make a suggestion? For time, why don't you put, interviews begin at ten AM? Don't list the time. What happens if you have five people you really wanna interview? That way you lock your, you don't lock yourself in or you don't lock a candidate in either. When you contact them on the twenty-second, and I'm assuming it would be the chair or you, probably you, I don't know, call them and just say, here's the time slots we have available.
We could even say, we're gonna interview between one and seven. And then we'd only maybe use four slots and they don't read it.
I don't know. You don't know it yet. I just wanna make sure you don't box yourself yet.
Yep.
And we have space here to do that during school.
So that was gonna be my question. So because it's a school day, we might wanna look at another site for, to conduct the interviews. And we also might want to, I mean, I'm gonna ask you, do you wanna have, give these people a tour of the facility like they you know, come in and, that's pretty common, right?
Yeah, usually second round.
Or maybe the second round, okay.
By that time you've got finalists and you don't have as many, but it's totally up to you. Some district doesn't have a first round as well. We don't have a vacant option on this place.
We do. I just, we're just gonna have, you know, full-blown school that day and.
Does the theater get used on school days?
Yeah.
They're both blacked out.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can get it set up if that's what you wanna do. I just didn't know if you wanna have everybody come on here on a full-blown school day or if there's another spot that we could use.
There's a spot, I'd rather just come over here and get it done.
Okay. Then we'll try, we'll do that.
Blackout, the labs, there's nothing in there that day.
Yep.
I'm just trying to think for televising and taping and recording it live. Best place is here, it's Dave's domain.
Now, would we televise the interviews? We wouldn't wanna do that, would we?
Most districts don't, simply because if a candidate doesn't get selected or whatever, you might sit and watch interviews and then complain about it if you have more than one. Like, if you're televising live and I'm at the end of the day, like I said, watch the early one, walk in the door. We've had one where they've gone two days, like two evenings for three hours or whatever it might be. People came in and they just knocked them cold, well, they we figured out they're watching the live, so they have, it's actually a lot of video.
Kind of, I think we did last month, so we pulled it.
Well, what we'll do is we'll try to, we'll free for them, like you say, probably the lack lab. And then we don't need to worry about, I'm guessing you don't wanna, we don't need to do the live interview with them. And and then at the end of that day, if we got it scheduled, so we had some time, you could sort through or have conversation about who are your top candidates and do you have someone you wanna go to right now or do we wanna have a second interview? And we would post that. And what they say then is, if we have, we say then the second round of interviews would be, let's say what the, there's first. And we decide to use it, we do it, if we don't, we don't. And those could be in the evening or late afternoon, like five and
Five and seven.
Seven, something like that.
Five and six, or whatever.
So the thirty-first would be second round if needed. And then
we're just suggesting that you might wanna look at a date for when you might negotiate a contract. You don't have to do that. You could list it as to be determined. Or do you do negotiations? The same thing with needing to approve a contract. Let's say that you get to the twenty-fourth, you get one candidate. That's the person you want. Hey, you talk to them and you go, absolutely, I'll take the job. And you sit down with them, you know, in three days if you negotiate a contract, and next morning, it means a day later you can approve the contract as headed to the agenda. Do that. So I would be a little careful about boxing yourself, if you're too tight, you may wanna have more flexibility.
But I would encourage if, if all that happens and you negotiate and get somebody who's accepted and you're all in agreement, we could schedule a meeting, but it would have to be three days, like we get three days, but we notice. So that would be a special meeting, because we don't wanna wait till the end of the month. I don't, I would, if we get somebody that we want, we wanna get them signed and you've approved it, they get ready to go.
You don't wanna wait to the end of January or maybe go into February?
Yep, I would think that that would be the first part of February.
February fifth, it's not the end of the school, it's a Monday.
Yep. So, but going with what Lee said, let's say that we get our person and on the thirty-first, everything's negotiated, yeah, then we could do that, but what if the negotiations take a little longer or something, or I don't know.
Well, like any meeting, the board, you can cancel a meeting, you can reschedule, just follow the bag, like it's not a big deal. This is mostly a way for you to tell candidates, this is what we're anticipating. And you can visit, they're gonna, candidates are gonna be calling you as a contact person all the time, probably.
Yep.
So you might wanna prepare for that.
So we'd say on the end of the night on the thirty-first, we might be able to offer a contract. We have to plan to negotiate it and you can either appoint a committee or identify your board chair or person or whoever. And then we'd put a tentative date down then of, what'd you say Dan? February fifth, was it?
I'm just saying Monday, because there's nothing going on for school.
Yeah.
These guys might have other things going on.
You're talking?
Fifth.
So February fifth.
For a special meeting to. I thought it was negotiate, because don't have to negotiate.
That's not a negotiating board or just the negotiations committee?
Well, what does the repatriator of this board have a say in the negotiation?
I think we give them the guidance. I hope you would want them.
So we do that on February fifth?
You're gonna talk to them a little about that one?
If I negotiate a contract, the board's going one of two ways. If you use a committee as a negotiations committee, like we got three of you, then you just need to schedule a committee meeting to meet with the candidate. You can do it in person, you can do it online, whatever works at this point in the candidate.
So I'm gonna stay on that part.
And then, and then once you come to an agreement, then you make that recommendation to the board, then the board can meet whenever you want to meet, in a three-day audit and approve the contract.
We're gonna set. But we're gonna set for the marketing thing, so you're gonna, you're gonna kinda have an idea. Of what we're gonna, of pace, go around.
We can talk about that tonight.
Yeah, we'll have that tonight. Because that's gonna go, yeah, because that's gonna go over here.
Well, it could, it doesn't have to, we're gonna talk about that next.
So we would tend to typically say that by February fifth, we'd like to be able to schedule a board meeting to approve the contract.
Some of the negotiations.
Um, they work twenty-four seven on it to get it done, maybe even forty-eight seven. Maybe. Get it done, right?
Not rockets, through the night, just like. I think you'd be surprised how quickly.
And chocolate.
Is that, that's even that's a good shot. It could. You establish all new committees.
But I think, what I, I don't know, I asked your opinion on this, but I think the healthiest thing to do, Dan, and board, would be to have a negotiations committee that worked with a person who would talk to whoever the candidate is and say, here's our offer, and they would have been given some authority to, you know, within these ranges, make it work. So that that person might meet with, if it was Corey or any one of you, they'd be, work out the details, you're gonna, you gotta live within the means, you know, that the whole board established, which is kinda what you're asking, like, so that, so that it can be a conversation and there's gonna be, the guy or person, gal is gonna have to think about it. But here's what we can do and we'd like you to let us know tonight or tomorrow. But it's cumbersome if we have a whole board or whole committee sit down and meet with a with a candidate. And I don't know when that's done or if it's even done like that.
Well, there's two. I have seen a whole board sit down with a candidate. We don't get it ever, even in the full searches, we don't get involved in the contract with this superintendent at all. The, there's one circumstance that I can think of in the last six, seven years where the entire board sat down with the candidate and negotiated it, and I think it left some bad feelings. There was, the majority, boards use committees, like you have, usually three people, that sit down with the candidate and do it that way. The other way is that the entire board establishes what it is that you're probably gonna pay or at least a very close range. And then either let the committee meet with them within that range, because everybody's an input or one person from the board meet with that person, with the, this is what the board is kinda authorized. Once you get that contract in, kinda put together, it still has to come back here for you to review and approve. So you get two bites of the apple. The first is establish the guidelines and the second is to approve. Thanks, Eric, for all of that. You're the corporate guy.
Corey's not before.
So can I work this, I wanna make sure that we've got these dates down. I'm gonna mark myself for it, because I have to give these to you. Maybe do some, go back to the top and the first thing is the January eighth is, it's posted, the application deadline is January fifteenth at midnight. The, we will review the applications on the sixteenth and you'll get access to them on the seventeenth. On the nineteenth, I will send you a list of who we feel best, your criteria. By the way, what we send you is just our review. You can pick anybody you want to interview. You don't need to pay our recommendations, it's whatever you feel you want to do. And I'll send that to you electronically. The twenty-second, you meet, it's your regular board meeting. What's the time for your regular board meeting?
Seven.
Yep. To determine whether you're ready to interview. The January twenty-fourth, beginning at ten AM is the first round of interviews. And January thirty-first, beginning at five PM is the second round of interviews if needed. And then February fifth is when you would need to negotiate. Those are the dates you stay up, no, they could be changed if you want.
I'll establish that, but I just said that. I don't hope anybody's intrigued.
What's that, the thirty-first?
February fifth. I just said it was Monday and there was no sports.
That's why I'm throwing it back out here, to make sure everybody's okay with those dates.
Same patterns. If we wanted to, if we wanted to, negotiations committee, we could meet the second.
You can change these dates, other than the application deadline and the interviews, I'd say you've got flexibility.
It's okay, you just gotta figure out, February fifth is a special meeting where we say, here are your names and negotiations, correct? That would be our special board meeting to hold down.
Yeah, because if negotiations drag on, then we're gonna have to cancel that and put it out.
Right. I want to know what is to have to get canceled?
No.
An hour? Like you. No, you have, as a board, you have an official posting site that's typically a holding the board out. Some, some boards also have electronic posting that they do with, things like that. But you can cancel it at any time. However, to host a meeting, you have to have a three-business day announcement. I was just thinking if it would drag on, we have to have a certain day that, the fifth is a Monday, and you have to post on, try to do something on the weekend, but if there's no timeline, then, I don't think, I think that works.
I think though, I wanna go back to Dan's a little earlier question. I would want to at least guide you from what I know, and I'm not, you know, I don't have a lot of experience like Lee does in different districts, but like, we don't wanna mess around here. If we are, if you're going after a first, a top caliber kind of candidate, I'm hoping that we, I think we should take the time to have conversation, what's acceptable to the whole board. And then some kind of a window of recommendations, like, here's what we'd like you to do. Because we're not the only school district doing this. And that we might, our best candidate might have two offers from someplace. And a good superintendent working with a good business manager is gonna do what Lee said. There's gonna be opportunities to create money, you know, as, as you go along. And I would want whoever it is, who's the lead person negotiating, to have the authority with some room. If he, if the person is, he or she is the person you want, now, we had to go get him. The person's gotta go get him. I'm not gonna be part of that process, but whoever is, because if I were on the interview side, I would want to know, hey, you have a board that's well organized here that said that you're our person, here's what we can pay, and send every signal that everything is solid. And that might not be different than what anybody's thinking, but that's how I'm thinking about it. And if it gets cumbersome, like, where we're talking back and forth in the meeting about what are you gonna do here? Like, it sends a wrong kind of a signal, like, why isn't all that done in advance? This is a board I'm gonna be working for.
Wasn't that our plan?
Yeah, I hope it is, but we haven't done this before. And I wanna make sure that there's flexibility for whoever it is. I don't care who it is, but that's what, I think that's what the top kind of candidates are gonna be looking for. Solid commitment. Like a very solid commitment, I think, six board members here, everyone wants me and like, boom, we're gonna get after some things. That's different than, well, you know, would you use for a thousand dollars less or? I don't know, maybe I'm the only one that's paranoid about it, because I haven't been through it, but.
I would just say, you know, the last year, the searches I did in this region, Deep River Crooks and East Grand Forks, year before, Boston, Amengee. Amengee was an outlier. Westside up and down, Big Park, Ottawa, Pipestone. So average number of applicants was four or five. And some of those were three. Amengee, outlier, they had like nine. There just isn't a huge pool of super tenants. We're finding that a lot of principals are getting paid fairly well and they don't see, they see the hassle of jumping up and they don't see the need to do that. And some of the people that are searching for the job probably are, they might not be people that want hire. And so there's this, it's just, frankly, COVID has really made life miserable for a lot of people. I did an interim two years ago and out of the, this, I've been in this fifty years, that was the worst year I've ever spent. Worst by far. And so a lot of people are seeing that and they're just not excited. So I'm hoping this year will change, because things have opened up and can be a little bit different. But that's historically what I've seen in this western half of the state. bit different, but that's historically what I've seen in this western half of the state. So if the states, Dan's mentioned, February 5th, are they okay with that? If you would approve, if you can approve this, then I can flow all this into the vacancy brochure, and we can jump into that.
February 5th, we'll vote on our selection, make it accept. Or is that on the contract? If we've already selected a candidate, negotiation fee for a person negotiates with that candidate, pay, accept the job. Fifth, we vote on it behind a court order.
That's the way I do it.
Yeah, you absolutely can. Establish that in your, when you put the agenda together, when you post it, that it could, the board will consider a contract and possibly adoption, whatever the possibility is. Don't box yourself in, and that way you could have complete flexibility.
Well, I'm hoping we don't have to put in there considered, we're going to have that considered.
It would be exciting to have it done on the 31st. I would be excited if you could get it done on the 31st.
We could, potentially.
It's very possible.
But what you're saying, Lee, is you're going to put this in, so then we're sending a message to the candidates, hey, here's the process. I can, I should set these dates aside, because if I, if I make it to the end, here's where they're going to interview, here's they're going to interview me a second time, here's where they're going to negotiate, here's where they're going to approve it.
But let's say that you're a candidate, Rick, and you apply on January 24th, and the board decides that you're the one candidate they want. They offered you a contract, it's within what it is you're looking for, and within a couple of phone calls, you said, okay, I'll take it. Within a couple of days, they're going to meet on the 31st, they'll have a contract ready for you to sign, you sign it, you won't hesitate, right? All of this, rest of this can be canceled now. So that's what we're talking about in terms of that. So if you're okay with these dates, then probably should adopt on that 48.
The motion.
Yep.
Motion.
Motion, Scott.
I'll second.
Second, my Shannon. Any further discussion on the timeline? Are you not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hosts.
Asher carries.
Okay, so I'll clear up the question. Pull up the brochure page that the, it's in the other, that, that this is the flyer that'll be posted, and you'll have used, hand out, it'll be mailed out to all kinds of superintendents, and we sent, sent out to all superintendents, I think dispatches might even get it, charter school directors, the service club directors, all kinds of people, in addition to all those other postings we made. This is a copy from what you used just a couple of years ago, and I'll walk you through it. Upper left, first page, is the basic information with a bunch of new financial information that has been supplied. I think you've got a chance to hopefully take a look at that, see if there's anything in there that you don't like, you want to change.
What about the air changers? Apparently it wasn't a referendum in the past, but it's going to happen.
Yeah, well, I helped the gal put that together, Pam, was it, or Amy?
Because that's like another, what, 10 million, 9 million?
Yeah. It was just that, I was, what they're trying to do is, my understanding is, these are things that would send signals, here's a very attractive job. And so I was trying to show the community support, that's why we had that, instead of a listing of everything we're doing.
Well, that's what your bone app is.
Yeah, that's kind of how that ended up there.
These are written for the candidates to read. And that's something that, if I were a candidate, I would probably call existing superintendent questionable about. Ken, Rick, that's something you can break about.
Yeah.
You know, those are the things you can talk about. And when they call me, I'm like, oh, thank you, because I can share that with them.
Well, I mean, it's just, I would hate to hire a superintendent, give you an all of a sudden, hey, oh, by the way, we do an air changers. Oh, nobody told you?
Anybody we hires, they know everything we're doing. But I think the bigger story that you're talking about is, are, all three of our buildings are, are on their way to be in superb shape. And maybe that's a comment we need to add, but I think that's in there.
That's your reputation, though, I think everybody knows that.
Here are the elements going on.
Okay, pull it. On the bottom left is the latest numbers that you have, that's staff supply, that upper right, the application deadline, you just approved that. So that'll flow, and they're automatically, in the middle above the communities, just there's, take a look at that, there's some of the information about the participating communities, I don't know if there's, we've got room to add a couple of lines, maybe at the most, if there's things you want to change, want to add, it'd be a good time All good? Okay, down in the bottom, the search deadline, we already decided on that, that'll automatically flow in. So then the next page, page two, the leadership profile, upper left, that's what you build on. This is as a group, what you thought was the most important, somebody who acts with honesty and ethical manner, somebody who's sensible and accessible, not only you, but to remember the community, the staff develops and directs it, effective leadership, team works hard, believe in the school board, provides options, recommendations, his knowledge and experience with negotiations, and bargaining, and effectively mediates the company's different perspectives. Those are the priorities that you set out. And then underneath, there was a line, previous superintendent experience not required. I think it was a 5-1 type choice. You can put in their previous experience preferred, but not required. But most people, even if they have experience, that is going to slow them down one bit, but it is sending a message, and those people, I mean, all of us got it for our first superintendency someplace, and this is sending a message to them that you're open to that, so. You okay with that statement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And the upper right, salary and benefits, if you look at the next page, where it says vacancy brochure, salary, language, options, here are four samples of what districts typically use, and go to the bottom one. This is the one I think that gives you the greatest model attitude, that's a box, you basically is saying, look, we're going to pay commensurate with your experience and ability, and as negotiable within statute. The first paragraph, we used to have several districts do that. A district, and I'm not going to name them, put in their current superintendent salary. This is what we're currently paying, well, anybody worth their salt that's going to do any back homework on you, I can look that up online, that's, that's not a big deal. So it's public knowledge, and now the next paragraph is exactly that last paragraph. And so they found that one applicant didn't apply, that they wanted to apply because the salary was so much less than they were currently making. They eventually stopped the process, suspended, put in an interim superintendent, and then reopened and rehired, and they used the last paragraph, that person reapplied, and they hired him. So these are four options, but that's what we'll put in here, if you choose one of those four, great. But if you'd like to have that sort of board, it's a salary and benefits option.
I vote for four.
Just wondering, now, as we get into that situation, if we don't have a minimum salary out there, we can get a candidate that's making more than that, and we come in and say the most we can afford is 160, and they're at 170. To me, it seems like we'd be wasting our time, because they're never going to come, because they're not going to take a pay cut.
We had one district that put a top and a bottom, and this is what we're going to pay in between, and it boxed them in, it didn't give them any flexibility.
See, I like the, I like the second one, where it's got a minimum salary of this, same, where we're going to bring somebody in for this, and if you've got more experience or you're a rock star, you've got some, potentially some flexibility. At least that probably weeds out some of the ones that are already making more than what our minimum is. I don't know. I just want to get into the situation we had last time, where we were only, you know, six grand higher than what the person was already making.
Well, number two is what, is number four, is what the minimum, right?
Would be at least this much amount.
All of them have the same language, which gives you the flexibility, and that's kind of governing, and the statute records. The three are, one is, this is what we're currently paying, the second one is just the minimum, the third one is, here's a minimum, a maximum. So what, what we're seeing now is almost every board is going to the bottom one, just because they want to have the greatest amount of flexibility. I think, first of all, I can look up, you know, salaries, I know what you're currently paying. I could also go back, if I've got any sample development, I can cast budgets, and I can make a full cause, public information, so Rick would have to tell me. So they can find out. Another way is for, you know, Rick, to be able to say to them, you know, I, I think you should apply, because I think that that's going to be an issue, have to talk money. Most superintendents don't talk money when they apply. They just don't. Not until they get towards the end, then they want to know what's going on.
The only, the only thing that I think about that is, we're a little smaller school, but got a lot of great things going right now, and just we, you know, when you just look at all the facility stuff, we will have or have done. And I wouldn't want somebody to say, I'm not going to apply there, because they're a smaller school, and probably they're not going to be, I mean, I don't know.
They're not going to pay as, pay as much.
They're not going to pay as much, and later I would say, don't assume that, because you guys are going to figure that out, but I think you're right, either way, they're going to call, so regardless of what you put in there, they're going to call somebody here and want to know, you know, what, what is the board's, has a board got a range, or has the board thought about this, or they just by trying to fill a spot, or they looking for leadership, or, and, and there's a difference between what you're going to pay, or one or the other.
Yeah, it's, it's how, how much do we want to show that, how aggressive we are, so if you don't put an amount in, may not look like we're aggressive to try to find somebody, but if you actually put an amount in, it might give that perspective, from my perspective, from what I'm thinking, at least you've got something in there. But then that amount is the kicker, is, are we going to be aggressive? Thus, setting the amount to be right.
A word, one word in addition, a very competitive compensation. You want to box it? Just say, very competitive.
To me, I look at this, if you put a minimum in there, they're going to start guessing, so what's your max? Probably have to say, we put a very competitive, and because we're going to have to be, no matter what, we're going to have to be very competitive, we want to get who we want.
If somebody asks me that, I'd say, if you want to know what the max is, you better, you got to be the best candidate. But we're, we're going to be aggressive here, we're not talking about being second rate. So here's our minimum, and we don't know what the max is, like, that's, that's to be determined, based on who we end up with, but guess what? That number that you put in there, that's $30,000 more than you're making now, or $20,000 more, so it's considerable. I like that we're aggressive than you is. It'll, it'll send a signal, because there are different, like, he talked about Pemiji, you're talking about a bigger number. I saw in the paper, Minneapolis is paying the gal they just let go, or the guy that just quit, $280,000. That's a different range, you know, but, but I think that.
To me, that.
All we need is one really good person that we want, and then you have to.
They have the minimum more, and ask me, said pretty good.
Right. I would agree.
Because if they call and ask, say, okay, what's, what's your current superintendent, or what you've been paying, where are your principals getting paid, and everything online, and then look at that, but minimum's got to be up there. Sort of be like.
I would throw $150,000.
Yeah. And I'd be okay. I'd be okay.
Now, your wiggle run's smaller, because we did raise that up, but, but yeah, but I think you got to have it high enough, otherwise, you just throw in $150, $120, sure, you know, max is a way more than that.
I think if you were to look at number two, and you use that number, you're accomplishing a goal. You're getting people who might be in the little bigger schools than what we're in right now to look at us. There's a lot of reasons to come here, but we got to get them to look at us.
Right. And having that minimum high enough, as I say, too, if you're in a bigger school, we get more headaches, well, if I can make a lateral move and be in a better school district than I can a lot here.
I mean, there's a lot of things that matter now, a unified board and things where, you don't have to agree on every decision, but like, there's a respectful way of dealing with things. That's not happening all over anymore. There are people spending a lot of time looking at banning books. Let's talk about banning books for two hours. And I'm not kidding you, because there's a lot of people leaving the business because of silly things that they're being asked to do.
I'm okay with number two.
I had to go give it to, Danny, you said you were, Eric?
Yeah. Mark? So how do you want it to read that? $150, is that what you're going to say? Or minimum salary of $150?
But that's, okay with that?
Well, I think, I think that's what, I think that's what market's going to be, I think if you look back from three years ago till now, we've got inflation through the roof, we've got people flipping burgers, I've been dollars for 18 bucks an hour now. We're in a whole different.
Frazzled.
And $150 might not even be enough.
Right.
It's, everything has just changed, and it's, everything's gotten so inflated that.
But I guess I'm asking, can we afford that? I don't care.
I will need to keep watching that and adjusting it, as everything changes. I would, yeah, right, need to look at it.
I would, I would say you can afford not to do that, but before you give it, you got to be convinced it's worth, it's going to be worth this, because that person's going to come up with ways to pay that, so, or a good share.
But you're saying that's a minimum.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is, you don't have to sell it.
Right. So our minimum expectation is $150,000 per person. And if we went more than that, we could easily lose more than the 25, 30,000 in poor management of the district. I have a lesser candidate who's willing to take, you know, $125 or $130, but the expectation is high when that number's not higher. I'll be good with that. $150.
You'll be good with that? And the vision there, and the district highlights, that we just, those are fresh, and the rest is just information, and then some of it will be determined, that's the deadline, that will automatically flow in. So this will get rebuilt tomorrow, and then we'll get a copy out to you by Friday, when we go to post. And I'll make sure that Ricky and all of the staff, I think they've already got the color cards, and they're going to see you post on your website, and then I'll make sure that you all get it, I'll come back, and we'll get it out to you soon as we can.
These other information items, board, just so you know, because I haven't talked to you about this, but like, the district financial highlights, they're accurate, all of that, it's going to be, by the numbers on the first page, and superintendent's going to look at this and say they got three building leaders, they got a building, a director of teaching and learning, that's big. They got a minimum salary here, that's big. Then we got high expectations.
Right.
So. So the right kind of people gravitate to that.
So I'll take a motion to approve the brochure as we discussed here tonight.
I'll be.
Motion by Shannon.
I'll go.
Seconded by Matt. May for the discussion. Are you none of those in favor? Are you high? Post. Motion carries.
Got a couple more decisions to make before we cut this a little bit at the end. I'm assuming that you want Rick involved in this process because you'll be doing a lot of things on your own. Is he, is it okay if he then is our contact person as well?
Yep.
Okay. So we'll, we'll work with Rick and he'll be our district contact, contact person. And while typically, you know, most of our work will be back office now. Rick and I have friends for everybody who's going to call when he has questions. Certainly, any interest in giving a call, Rick will be a member of that other tonight if you want. You're welcome to give me a call as well. I'll do what I can to help. So Lee, on that, would, would it be possible though to say this, the board chairmans? If you apply, do they apply to you or are they going to?
They apply to us. You won't, you will, you will not know who applied.
Okay.
The, the application is done electronically. The way they do it is if I'm a candidate, I'm going to build a file, electronic file, a folder. And it's going to sit on our server. And this secure server, then they get to release the data. And let's say that I want to apply at Lackawaro. I'll write a letter to Lackawaro and I grab the entire file and drop it. And then when you hit your deadline, you'll get to see all of them. You'll get to see the references. You'll get to see their transcripts, their reference letters. You'll get to see everything, their letter of application, all that kind of stuff, their history, work history. And then at the end here, we're going to have, talk about two questions. If we can maybe do that quick now, we'll talk about agreement. You can choose two questions that they, they will answer. And I talked about them earlier, I think. And maybe we can talk a little bit about that as well. And then you'll get to read all that. So all of that's put together and what gets released on, what was it, the 17th? Then you'll get to see a whole deal. And I'll, I'll talk to our legal staff about you having access to some of that stuff because you're going to be doing coordination for a while.
So before you do those two questions, I, I don't want to lose this. So the information will come and then the board, it's going to be released to the board, but they want to see the names. Is that correct?
No, they'll see the names.
Okay, so when they see the names, what are the conditions of confidentiality or data privacy? I don't really know what they are, but I want to make sure, sure that everybody's aware.
The statute provides that anybody who applies for a job is, their information is completely private. You can't talk about it to anybody. That's your responsibility by law until they have been chosen by you on the 22nd to be interviewed. Once you choose to interview them, then certain pieces of that can become public. Their name, their job title, where they live, kind of thing. Anybody who is not chosen to be interviewed, you can never release their names. And all information has to be kept private. So when you get access to that file, you can't share that file with anybody. That opens you up for legal actions. So be really careful about that. It's a one place you can really get into trouble. And then when it's done, when it's all closed, then we'll close down the link. And by, you'll have one copy that you can file. You have to keep it by the Data Retention Act, Records Act. Three years, I believe?
Okay.
Three years, I think, yeah. And so that's, that's the one thing you'll have to do. But again, that's private data and it can't be shared except for the parts that are allowed under the Data Privacy Act.
All right.
So we, we could just make the assumption that the order, the candidates in that file are just going to be A, B, C, D. You know what I'm saying? I'll be talking to me. Just that assumption, first one is A. Just so everyone's on the same page.
Well, see, I'll, I'll talk to Shelby who does all this, our electronic stuff. She might attach letters to them. So when you get them, you'll see that there's a letter attached to them. She'll send along a legend. So Rick Kellyworth, candidate D, Laborer, candidate D, or whatever the moniker she puts on. That'll give you the, the ability. You'll have the legend so you'll know. And you, you've got it right there. I mean, if you look at it on your laptop or whatever. I would caution you, you know, about printing copies and things like that. That's probably not good. So search agreement. The next page is the limited search. It tells us what it is that we would do, the initial planning, which we're doing tonight. We talked a little bit, I actually recorded a little bit before, just to review what the agenda would be today. We, we did have each of you do the candidate profile information as in the brochure. You just did a few years ago, the, the community survey. But you might want to have a discussion amongst you, how you want to have people involved. And that probably would be through the interview process. But we wouldn't do a complete community survey or anything in the limited search. The, we developed the brochure and we'll be posting it all over the place. We'll also be contacting quite a few people. Rick had mentioned that he'd seen two districts that just posted. Those emails go out, hundreds of them go out. And we also post in MSBA, which is the primary place where they can post. We have the superintend's association, the principals' associations, EdPost. And there's a new one called the Minnesota Job Site that isn't quite up to stuff yet. We're, we're not quite ready to use that, but I'm hoping that'll happen for too much longer. We may post it there, although nobody knows to look at it yet because it's so new. And, and then Revelus, which goes to a nationwide thing. And then the, we will work with all of the candidates as they apply. We'll also, we get a lot of phone calls. Candidates will call, they'll see my name on the thing, they'll call me. What's the deal? What's going on? How do I do this? How do I do that? Shelby Herrera will handle all of Revelus stuff and take all the technical phone calls. Bjorn is in charge of all the searches for MSBA. We'll, we'll get a bunch and we'll deal with a lot of that stuff. The things you've been talking about here, we'll be prepared to deal with. We'll also review the applicant's files, make sure their credentials are up to stuff. And then I'll send out that list that matches your profiles. And that, at that point in time, the rest, you do the interviewing, you select your candidates, that kind of thing. So that's the, the contract. And I think you got a completed copy, is that right? Signature?
Yeah.
I think it still needs to be approved because I'm stating.
Yeah, let's just approve that now then. So actually approve the contract with MSBA. So, motion by Scott. Also, send them a Danny for the discussion. Are you none of those in favor?
Hi.
Oh.
And Rick will mail that in. So at the two screening, sorry, so last page there, here's some samples of what districts have used in the past for the two questions that go on the application. I don't know if any of these fit what you're talking about. We can craft something specifically for you or for your area. You know, I was, when we were visiting before the board meeting, I was thinking, you know, handling a district with multiple communities is kind of a unique skill set. If you haven't done it, it's, it's not like having a single town, you know, a single situation. So you might want to think about something like that. Or maybe if you have, you know, other things, whether it's curriculum, facilities, rednems, whatever that might be, the oceans, you might want to think about one of those. We can write a, a question tonight that would match that. Because this will go to Evie in the, Shelby in the morning and she will get into the applications because it will go live on Friday. And so we want to make sure we have this ready to go. So if you want to take a look at that and see if there's any of these that jump out at you or in particular.
Ten. Ten and six.
Six.
Anybody else? Do they want, you know, the one, you touched on with the communities, I think. It, it came through the referendum meetings around the community connections, you know, with the school district and how we do that in regards to growing those relationships. So instead of just saying communities is, you know, making sure that the candidate understands it's multiple towns, type of communities.
Yeah, let me take the word multiple and move that to multiple communities. So Rick, please describe your approach to build strong relationships with stakeholder groups within both the school district and multiple communities.
Because I feel there, there was a lot of discussion about how do you ensure that Madison, Appleton, Mylan, Marietta, and that's all of them are thinking Lackawaro is Lackawaro. It's not Madison, it's not Appleton, I, whatever, it's Lackawaro. And how do you get those businesses, individuals slash whatever, to be thinking that way? And we need somebody with that strong, strong super, being able to describe maybe your approach to the use in other places like that. That'd be nice to know.
So one in ten, man?
What I have? One in ten. One in one.
One in ten. So one in ten.
Yep.
And you good?
Yep.
Scott, you good?
Yep.
Okay. I will take one in ten, one with the change in multiple. Slide it over and we'll kick that in as well. Now, what questions do you have for me before we cut here?
I, I have one question for the board that's similar to what you just talked about. How would you feel if we, if we upduly designed a question that goes into the whole community that just says, in 300 words or less, write a letter to your, this is an opportunity for you to convey to the school board what you believe is important in hiring your next superintendent? Instead of conducting a survey or trying to shape, we ask 10 questions and none of them hit on what they thought. And then we make those, whatever responses we get, it could come from staff or it could come from community or kids. Anybody that chooses to spend time, it's an opportunity to convey to each board member 300 words or so of what they hope you'll look for. Can you put it in all the local newspapers or the website, under the local, under the editor, letter to the editor saying, hey, the school board? We could do that. We could ask Lydia, could we ask? Or they can just write a letter, put a stamp on it, mail it. Or they can go to our website and convey it. Where there'll be a collection, Dave? Isn't there something that would happen then, like a Google collection? And each one of you would get all 200 responses and at your leisure, or for.
Can I make, can I make one suggestion? Still, what MSBA sent to us? Like, what are the top five things you're looking forward to, superintendent?
See, now, I didn't, I didn't get that. But that was the link, right?
Then it's one of those that, instead of having to read 200 responses, it could come in a graph for me. And 50% of people, you know, one of those where you can see like the top. And then if they have that option, add an additional comment.
So if they all said, we need a great communicator, that will be relevant. It's something you all see.
Yeah, and then it's prioritized. Okay, I don't, you say, I don't have time to read 200.
Yeah. Do you have a copy of that? I don't have that or anything. You could just send it to.
Okay.
You get an email patch.
Wow, we got it to a link. It was, it was like a link that we had to click on.
I just needed the email questions, right?
Yeah, just because it was a check, it was, yeah, it was a checkbox. It was, I think there was what, 10 or 15 choices?
The only thing I like to leave on there is there's going to be some person that says, we need an art program here. And if that wasn't identified, like, how do we?
Well, that's where I think we have a comment section. So you have a nice top graph that tells us these are. And then we can see the numbers, what people think are important. And then we have the.
I think that's a good idea.
And then we have a comment, then the comments can just fall in. And because I'm not going to read 200 things, I'm sorry.
I think it should be like 100 ones or.
I just think.
Yeah, or even a hundred worth of.
I think it gives the community a chance to feel like they conveyed to six board members. And we'll just tell them, this is just going to the board. This is your chance to communicate with the board. We can put the message out on Parents Square, correct?
I could put it out on the local newspaper that they could go onto this website.
Well, I think our director of teaching and learning is exceptional in designing this kind of stuff.
What do you think, Rick?
I'm thinking.
You got a QR code, right? You can, you can do all of that kind of stuff. I'll get the list to Rick that you, same thing you saw. I don't have it with me and I didn't, I don't get that email. But I'll get that to you so you'll know exactly what they're talking about. It's really simple. And all you got to do is, you know, recreate it and then either post it or, you know, you could throw a QR code out there with the newspaper or whatever you wanted to do. Just leave it.
But that's going to be healthier than trying to bring people together and have long discussions and that's still conveyed to you.
There's some priorities. I think, yeah, I'm not having on reading comments and stuff.
I like that idea. I just want to make sure that we communicate to all the communities, you know, newspaper and Parents Square that, hey, this is your chance. Well, here, tell us what you want. I think what we'll do is call like Lydia or Adam and, and Appleton, Leslie, to say, what would you advise us to do? What message could we send through the newspaper to convey? We want input, but we're moving fast.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have that. I would, I would read some directions and stuff.
Oh, you would prepare.
So that would protect, sort of protect it a little bit on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd just say put an ad for.
Oh, I see. Yours is by an ad. Yeah. Oh, I see.
Well, what Danny suggested with Parents Square, a number of questions about that. They just, they, they put that out there and put a link to it. And they, they ask parents, please give, give us your input. You know, the board would like your input. Here's a link for in the next qualification for the next superintendent.
Well, I think Parents Square is going to get to all our parents. And then number two, the newspaper is going to get out to more of our seasoned, seasoned people in our community.
Kind of way to say that, thank you.
People, yeah, people who don't have children.
Right. But are still what we would call pillar of the community inside.
Yep. I'll get that to you.
Okay, great.
That's everything I have to read. Unless there are more questions?
Thank you, Lee, for coming on.
My pleasure. It was really fun to leave the snow and see 56 degrees, 57 degrees today. I live in Grand Rapids, by the way. So it was kind of a treat for me.
It was, it was crazy to me. I couldn't believe all of this.
Yeah, well, a friend of mine from Marshall called on the way. But my way down here, it was telling me about it, telling me to suffer. And I said, well, I'm just outside a door. I said, it's really pretty nice.
Just, I'm not going to.
Can we get it about every 12 years? At least I'll give you the questions again.
Anything else for tonight? Counting most adjourned.
All seconds.
Motion by Danny, seconded by Eric. All those in favor?
Hi.
Who's?